This July the 27th, 2016 meeting of the Franklin County Commission, roll call.
Commissioner Waymire, Vice Chair Renaud.
Here.
Chair Howard.
Present.
Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
Okay, if you would all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Reverend Charles Adams.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we are grateful in these troubled times for good government and for those who care and protect for us as a community. Bless this community with success and prosperity. May your word, may decency, may honesty be advanced in all places, may all offense be taken away, and may the common welfare be properly and peaceably provided for, and may we be obedient and devout citizens. Granted all for Jesus' sake. Amen.
Thank you Reverend.
It takes us to correspondence and organizational business.
None at this time.
Okay, public comment, we do have some signed up.
Richard Oglesby.
Okay. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Rick?
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Richard Oglesby from 527 South Cherry in Ottawa, Kansas. Yesterday, as many of you may be aware, was the anniversary date, 26 years ago, that the Americans with Disabilities Act was signed into law by President Bush. As a member of the city's Accessibility Advisory Board, this is a very important issue to me, especially having a son with a disability. I want to encourage this commission and the county as well to, at some point in time, if you haven't done it, to invite an evaluator to come into your facilities to evaluate your facilities for ADA compliance. I find this extremely important, the city found this extremely important. When they did it, they didn't realize the little bitty details that had been skipped along the way. And it's all about making our community, our government buildings more inclusive to everyone who has a chance to participate and to come into these buildings and to be able to use them, and be able to use them with more freedom. I know that this is something, hopefully, maybe you could collaborate with the city on when they have an evaluator come in, something you could jointly do. It would help you as well to be able to meet and keep that portion of the law as far as the county is concerned, to be able to not have any challenges from anyone in the public. And I know that I'm sure that in your hearts, all of you want to be able to make the county's buildings and facilities accessible to everyone who may have a chance to use them. So, I'd just like you to take that under concern and advisory for you to think about and something you may want to do in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, Gene?
Good morning. Gene Hurt, 107 Jefferson Street in Promona, Kansas. Well, I see Commissioner chair is empty of the 4th District again. So, what I thought today, I think, is important, the people need to know a little bit more out there, and I hope some of them will be listening today. Over here on this wall, over here, are the six principles for a code of ethics conduct of Commissioner. And I'm going to cite, there's not every one of them, just three of them, and two of them totally impartial of one, that I feel he's really violated for the citizens that he's supposed to represent in the 4th District. First one is number one. We will strive for honest and transparency and full communication about public policy, the delivery of the county services. Number three, public interest, and hold ourselves accountable in that one. And number six, we will protect public competence and our integrity by rejecting use of our county position for personal gain. So, I myself feel he's violated these, and there's a number of us out there now, as you all know, with a petition, and we're striving to get the signatures we need for a recount. Thank you.
Public comment. Okay, that takes us to the consent agenda. Items today on the consent agenda that need considered and approved will be the minutes for the July the 20, 2016 commission meeting, and the commission study session minutes for July the 25th, 2016. There are no claim vouchers and no tax change orders. Also need to consider and approve the payroll for the period of June the 21st, 2016, through July the 20th, 2016, in the amount of $1,108,144.36. Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion is a second?
Second.
Motion is second, yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, on the items of business, I'm going to change it up just a little bit. We're going to move number three up to number one. Mr. Sharp is, needs to be in Columbus this morning also, so we're going to go ahead and let him go first, so he can give us a presentation on K-CAMP Risk Management Program.
Thanks. Thank you, Commissioner Howard. Appreciate you doing this here. I'll be sort of brief. If I was a little bit last year, I come through once a year, just to give you the status and a little bit of overview of your property casualty and liability insurance here. And so, keep me on track here, I have some notes here. I know you get a lot of paperwork, I don't expect you to keep them handy for at least, you know, two or three years maybe.
Sure.
You're getting three of you, you don't have a pop cover, like me. Commissioners, these are double sided here. On page two, that'd be the backside of the front page here. We did here at the annual KCCA, Kansas County Commissioner Association meeting, that was held in May in Manhattan, we had a special recognition dinner, and at that dinner, we did recognize our charter members that has been with us since 1992. 1992, 32 Kansas counties came together to form an insurance pool to meet the specific needs of counties across the state. Franklin County was one of those counties. You've been a charter member, a continuous member since that time, and so, we did give out some little recognition awards here, and I would like to give that to you, because I was thinking, since you worked there, to receive it there. So, I'd like to present this here to Franklin County on behalf of your insurance pool. Our administrative assistant ordered these, and I asked her, I said, "Well, you know, what is it?" I'm sort of a practical guy, you know, I always see something that you use it for, you know. I said, "Well, you set it up and look at it." And I said, "Well, okay, that's what I'll tell the Commissioners." So, anyway, Commissioners, I want to...
Thank you.
Congratulations, Franklin County, on behalf of K-CAMP, being charter members. Last year, or this year, we continue to grow, we did add three new members this year, and one other member came back in after they had left. That member was Jackson County, up at Holden. The other members that we've added was Cheyenne County, that county seat would be St. Francis, that's in the other time zone, that'd be north of Goodland. We did add Kearney County, west of Dodge City. We added Clark County, which is south of Dodge City, which would be Ashland, along the Kansas-Oklahoma border. And also, since I was here last year, we added two other counties last year, late last year, that'd be Stafford County, St. John's a county seat there, and Hodgman County, which would be Jetmore. So, we do continue to grow. On page three, as you can see here, we do have a county map that shows all of the Kansas counties. We've grown to 66 county members since Franklin County, and 31 other counties established K-CAMP back in 1992. Page four, that membership growth over the past two years reflects a 22% increase. Growth is good in our business. I don't want to get into the politics of growth is good in government or not, you know, but for us here, the more Kansas counties that we have here, the more we're able to provide better services and spread that risk. On page five, the K-CAMP governance, we do have a seven-member board of trustees, they are elected for three-year terms, we will have two vacancies coming up this year, that will be, you know, elected here at our K-CAMP Annual Business Meeting in conjunction with our sister agency, K-Work, the workers' comp arm of county pool, of the county pool. And that is held in conjunction with KAC, we have our annual business meeting at that time. The next page over, on page six, it does show the list of the trustees from this area You know, we don't have anyone really just specifically from this area. David Lamb, Lynn County Clerk is the president, would be a trustee from this area, so we're always looking for some more representation out down in this area. So, if there's anyone on this board, or if you know of any Commissioners that are K-CAMP members that's interested in being a trustee, we'd sure appreciate you giving that some consideration. We meet once a month in Topeka, where our home office is. I'm home office out of Hutch, thank goodness, because that's sort of in the middle of the state, you know. Even when you're in the middle of the state, it's still an all-day trip and back to Goodland, or down at Elkheart. The next closest county clerk, I guess, from this area here, would probably be what may be Sonia Stowe's, Marshall County Clerk, which is not really in this, right in this area. Page seven, then assets. In 2007, we were just under $5 million. If you go here in the last eight years, we've increased that to over $20 million. A lot of that's been because we have been having some consistent growth over the last eight years here, and fortunately, our losses have been within the average here for the K-CAMP pool as a whole. Page eight, the property rate, annual contribution per $100 of insured values. In 2008, it was 18 cents, it has gone down to 15 cents. To me, that's significant. As you'll recall, back in 2009, we had the Great Recession, and insurance across the nation took a hit on that, as you, if you remember, back then, we, part and parcel of that Great Recession was the housing bust, had a lot of foreclosures. The mortgage companies had insurance for that, for those mortgage-backed securities, and back then, we had some of the world's largest insurance carriers just about go under. AIG was one of them, if you remember, and that's where we talked about, you know, government bail out and helping them out of here a little bit because of the ramifications. So, you know, we entered into an era of a hard market in insurance, in the insurance world. A hard market is when premiums are going up, soft market when it's going down. But as you can see, even though we were in an era of hard market, we continued to adjust our premiums and/or reduce our rates, and that's reflected here. And the same on the liability rate on page nine. 2008, it was 64 cents per $100, 2016 is 50 cents per $100. On the liability side, what's really been hit, you know, across the nation here, is what we call law enforcement liability. And all I have to do is just remind you to see what's going on across the country here with various police departments. And so, fortunately, in Kansas, we haven't had that stuff, but still yet, we're part of the bigger picture here. On page 10, the rate stabilization program, this is, the trustees have enacted this for the second time around. Essentially, what that amounts to is, is that we, as K-CAMP, agree to ensure Franklin County for the next three years at essentially the same rate, adjusted for inflation. In the insurance world, you don't see that. I know I talked to my insurance agent that I carry my insurance with, and I was telling them about this program, and I said, "Well, if I agree to stay with you for the next three years, will you keep my rates about the same?" He looked, he said, "I don't know what you're talking about, I've never heard of that." But we, but the trustees thought, "This is another thing that we can do for our counties," and I know as county Commissioners, come budget time, and I'm assuming you've already gone through that process here, it's nice to at least have some areas in your budget that you can sort of think, "Well, we can sort of accurately predict what our costs are going to be next year." And with K-CAMP, you can do that. And usually, you know, we'll give you a heads up if it's going to go up, or you'll know yourself if it's going to go up, if you build a new jail or a public works building or something like that, you know you're going to have some property coming online. Page 11, the liability program structure, because of our strong net asset position, that $20 million that we do have in the bank, as you know, being an insurance pool, not a company, we're sort of like a credit union of counties, but on the insurance side, we are partially self-funded. We self-retain the first $250,000 of a liability claim. We did. We have increased that to the first $500,000. What that has done for the K-CAMP insurance pool, that deductible, where we doubled it, has significantly reduced our reinsurance cost. A lot of people don't know, but in the insurance companies, a lot of insurance companies have insurance, you know, they have reinsurance for catastrophic claims, it's called spreading the risk. Well, we do the same thing. So, on the liability side, we retain the first $500,000 in-house of that claim, then we have reinsurance. On page 12, same side on the property and casualty, except it's still $250,000, then we have reinsurance that will pick up that difference of that claim. On page 12, you can see here the breakdown of our reinsurance companies. We self-retain, say we have a big hailstorm come through here, takes out your roof, a bunch of cars, over $250,000. We pay the first 250, then we contact our reinsurance carrier, which is called County Reinsurance Limited. That in itself is an insurance pool of counties. With 3,033 counties across the United States, they have a significant insurance pool, they're headquartered in Boston. Then we have a third layer called Lexington. These are companies that you don't really hear about, because they're the companies you don't go buy your car insurance or homeowner's insurance from, all they do is insure insurance companies. The last one you might have heard of, it's called Lloyds of London, multiple syndicates here, but that's for the upper stratosphere claims, we've never really got into that level of claim yet. On page 13, 2016 coverage changes, and this will just about wrap it up. We did add terrorism coverage to the liability program. You know, the trustees, being in government themselves, because all of the trustees are county-elected officials, thought, you know, things are, you know, different in the United States and across the world with respect to terrorism, you know. And so, now, it's gone beyond the disgruntled taxpayer coming in here upset about their taxes, you know, it's other people that you got to worry about. And so, we did add liability to that. The third bullet point, drone coverage. I don't know if you've talked about drones around in this part of the country or not. I was in, I was in Abilene last week, Dickinson County, they just had a, they just had a, somebody busted out of their jail last night there, and we were talking about that, and I said, "I don't know of any county yet that has a drone, but I think it's going to come." And they said, "We just got a drone that we're going to use here." And so, I said, "Well, get ahold of us." I said, "Because, you know, you know, right now, that's additional coverage, especially on the liability side." And they were telling me about it, and one Commissioner said, "Well, what kind of liability?" I said, "Well, if Dickinson County is flying this thing around, say they're looking at bridges, or law enforcement's looking for a escapee at Desperado, and a crop duster comes in low, and he's going to dust some crops, and they collide, we might have a wreck there, and might have some liability in that thing." So, you got to think about that stuff. And I suspect here, Franklin County and other counties, at some point in the future, and you may see it before you leave the board, that, you know, we may be looking at drones, they got it, the emergency management director is in charge of it, there in Dickinson County. As you hear this spring, they had a tornado come through there and tore up some of the bridges, and they used that drone to go up and check the bridges and check the debris in the river, rather than just drive up there and then see where we've got to go to get that out, or be aware of it, so we can protect our bridges. So, it has a lot of merit, I think, here, and so, I know that they're using it, and I understand Miami County is looking at one, that's not one of our, one of our counties. So, you do have that available if you ever have some discussion about that. And risk management services, you're aware of Attorney Assist, that's where, you know, we have an attorney on call. Generally, the users of that's either the clerk, or county administrator, or county counselor, they're pretty familiar with it. And second thing, that's turned out to be more and more popular every year, is the Risk Avoidance Grant. We do have $2,000 set aside here for Franklin County to be used, it's your money, to help mitigate and manage risk, that is, manage claims there, and use that money to help avoid claims or mitigate those claims here. And I think you've used that in the past, usually the users of that, it's usually the sheriff or public works there. Have you used it yet this year?
Yeah, we, I don't think this year, but we always coordinate something.
Yeah, yeah.
That helps the organization.
Sure, you know the process, just like a public health grant, well, here's where we're using it at, any comments and stuff. The last thing I want to talk about here on page 15, and just about three things, the 2015 service highlights. We did provide over 2,900 online courses to our county employees through Internet University. We had over 400 calls to Attorney Assist. We did pay over $77,000 to our member counties in Risk Avoidance Grants, and we did provide in-person training to over 170 road and bridge employees. And so, we're certainly, you know, available to do that. We had, you know, anywhere from errors and emissions to safety. Ours is geared more toward, not so much on the workers' comp, it's more sort of on the liability side, you know, to help manage those. Any questions, Commissioners?
I have one question on the TULIP program. We have a situation that probably interests us in how that works.
TULIP stands for Tenant User Liability Insurance Premium, and what that is, is, I call it vendor insurance. If you have a Franklin County Fairgrounds here, I don't know what the governance is on that, is the board of Commissioners...
No, that's a separate agriculture society.
And so, they get their own insurance. But what that is, is if you ever have an event here, I know down at Garnett, when I was down there, Anderson County, they were getting ready to have a fair out there on their arts fair, I think, on the courthouse lawn, and they were asking about that, said, "Well, we have these vendors come in here and set up, should they have liability?" I said, "They should have liability." I said, "The problem is, is say one of the vendors stretches an extension cord from their snow cone machine, or whatever, over to the courthouse to plug it in, and somebody comes and trips over their extension cord and hurts themselves, who's liable for that? If the county lays the court down, we've got your back on that. But if it's the vendor, they should have their own liability insurance." So, that's what that is. I don't know if you have any events here in Franklin County?
We have Power of the Pass, and they set up for cruise night on the courthouse lawn, but they require each vendor to have liability insurance.
Yeah, that's what that is. We don't, we don't have it, we just provide a avenue to get it, and to assist you in getting it, to cover Franklin County, in case... You know, in Lyon County, Emporia, a good example, you know, they had a county fairground and had a racetrack, had cars down there, you know, racing around it, and wheel came off one of the cars, race cars, went up in the stands, hurt somebody. I don't know if the race promoter, I'm assuming he had liability insurance, I hope he did, because, you know, as you know, Counselor, even though they got liability insurance, it was still at the fairgrounds, you're going to be in that mix until you can get out of it, you know. And it makes it a lot more difficult to get out of it if they don't have liability insurance, because as we know, you know, the attorney's going to say, "Well, who's got the money here?" You know, so, "Well, Commissioners write checks, let's go talk to them," you know, and that's how that works. So, if you do have any of the events here, you know, just, it sounds like you're sort of on top of that here, but we do, we do have that available for you.
Well, appreciate it, and have a safe journey.
Well, thank you, thank you Commissioner. How long does it take me to get to Columbus from here now?
Couple, little, maybe a couple hours, a little over a couple hours.
I'm figuring about two and a half hours. If I can get there before noon, I'll be fine. Thank you for your understanding. See ya.
Okay, we'll go back to consideration of approval of the Lake Region Soil Waste Management Plan. We discussed this on Monday at the study session, I don't think Charlene's here. John, you like to just add anything to this?
I think it's all straightforward, you guys got any other questions?
I don't think we had any questions really at the study session. Does this have a resolution number? Does this have a resolution number?
Yes, it's a resolution. It's... Sorry, I didn't look up the number. Thirteen, sixteen, thirteen?
Thirteen, sixteen, thirteen?
Six, no, sixteen, thirteen.
Sixteen, thirteen. Okay, with that, if there's no questions, we'd look for a motion to approve the Solid Waste Management Plan Resolution Number 16-13. Have a motion? Don't move.
Have a motion, it's a second.
Second.
Motion's second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, where are we at here? Okay, next item would be to receive an update on Lake Region Resource Conservation and Development, RCND, from Don Stollmeyer.
Morning.
Morning, Don.
Got a couple things. I'll get in and out of here. I won't be my usual long-winded person. Had a couple things come up, and I thought you guys need to be updated on. First of all, I want to thank you for approving the Solid Waste Authority for this next year. Thank you, guys, for allowing me to serve on that another year, and with John and the rest of us, we spent a lot of time talking about how we could improve that, lower the cost, but yet offer the same service, and I think we've done that. I think everybody's agreeable. Took quite a while to come to the decision which direction we do it, and how we do it, but I think we all come to a final thought that we did the right thing for all the counties, and still keep the work going. Next thing, I want to thank the commissioners and everybody that was involved here. On June the twentieth, we had Kansas, Pitting Kansas Dinner and Dialogue, had several county officials there. Want to thank Midge Rantham. I took it to her office, and she jumped right on board and helped, and did carry the big part of the load, putting it all together, and appreciate it, and the Food Policy Council, and we got a lot of good reports back on that. We did have 75 people signed up for that, had a few that didn't make it, but we had a few made that weren't signed up, so they went over really well. I think there've been some good things come out of it. I think there's even been some interest, some more interest. People didn't realize what the Food Policy Council did, and who they represent. And I think we've had Promona open up a farmer's market since this has taken place. I was gonna be here, likely have been here Monday when Charlene was here, but they asked me to come down to Coffee County. Burlington's trying to reestablish their farmer's market, and they asked me to come down and talk, and help, and see what the RCND could help to help promote that. And I just got back from the National Conference. State of Kansas RCND Council's approved and sent me to the National Conference, Ron Brown and myself, which is, he's from CCAN RCND, and he's on our National Board. We both attended the week-long conference in Reno, and we come back, I think, with a lot of good ideas, and we're already in contact with an RCND out of Alabama, and we've been talking, we haven't talked to Midge yet, but one of the things, one of the big subjects was, how do you keep fruits and vegetables and carry them over and be able to make them last? Well, they've come up with a program in Alabama, and what they call is the Ego Cool Traders, and they're, they're custom-made, and different sizes, way overly insulated, and they have a little air conditioning unit that holds temperatures at 40 degrees. And what they do is they take these trailers out, different processors that are like around here that have a lot more than they can handle, or keep, or lose, and what they do, they rent these trailers out to them, and they're able to store those vegetables and fruits in there for a whole week if they have to, and keep them at a natural temperature, and be able to save more of it. And, and the big question was, we talked about how all this leftover, what do you do with that? And then we talked about taking it around different towns and so forth, and have, and that would be the problem of keeping it fresh, and that's where these cool trailers would come in, the fact that we could use those, and it's still up in the air, but we're still seriously talking about it. What I got here in front of you here on the first page, while I was out there, I presented this, the United States Department of Agriculture, Washington DC, Natural Resource Conservation Development Week. Mr. Tom Vilsack, which is the Secretary of Agriculture, I'll read this real quick. By the Secretary of Agriculture, United States of America, proclamation, whereas September 27, 2016, marks the 54th anniversary of establishment of the Resource Conservation Development RCND program, developed under the administration of President John F. Kennedy, with leadership by Secretary of Agriculture, Orville Freeman, to help conserve natural resources, enhance the social and economic well-being of rural communities throughout, through volunteer-driven RCND councils, and whereas RCND councils assist by over 20,000 volunteers, now serve 100 million people, 180 million people in 50 states, Caribbean, and Pacific Basin. Whereas the council's mission to deliver coordinated resource conservation, economic rural development, assists and attains important day as it was in exception. Whereas RCND councils continue to provide focal points for the local leadership and community engagement, and bring together citizens, grassroots organizations, the local, state, and federal agencies on behalf of the project to benefit rural America. Now therefore, I, Thomas Vilsack, Secretary of United States Department of Agriculture, do hereby proclamate September 25, October 1, 2016, as Natural Resource Conservation Development Week. I encourage all Americans to recognize the importance, contribute of the RCND councils to America life, and how to honor RCND councils and their work with the appropriate options and activities. In witness thereof, I heretofore sat my hand this 10th day of June 2016, the 214th Year of Independence of the United States of America, Thomas Vilsack, Secretary. And I might mention, while we were out there, it was very well-attended, had 150 people attended it, all the way from Alaska and Hawaii. There were people, and then all from 50 states. Second page, just a quick, we got a letter of recommendation for the Kansas Department of Corrections to Lake Region RCND from Ellsworth Bike Sergeant Dakota, subject, letter of recognition. The Ellsworth Correctional Facility Bike Program and the Lake Region RCND partnerships and the adopted bike program began in 2004. From 2004 to present day, in '16, we have received 6,005 donated bikes from the Lake Region RCND. The bike shop has refurbished a total of 1,846 for the RCND. All of these bikes were delivered, picked up, and distributed by the Lake Region RCND to less fortunate children and adults. These are life-changing experiences for children at Christmas, or beginning of summer, or an adult that does not have transportation, which he could use his bike to travel back and forth to work to support his or her family, and/or not able to drive a vehicle. Lake Region RCND also supports the bike program, financially allowing us to order bike parts through a company in Ohio. Lake Region RCND Positive Attitude Wellness to Go the Extra Mile, and Mission to Help People That Are Less Fortunate, is very much appreciated by the State of Kansas and the Ellsworth Bike Program, and most appreciated by the community that receives these services. And thank you for all you do. Best regards, Sergeant Dakota, Kansas Department of Corrections. And that's all I got this morning, unless you'd have a question for me. I just, instead of coming all at once and speaking for an hour, I think maybe I need to break it up a little bit. You guys were at the meeting over at the Ocho, had a Miami County Commissioner at the meeting, and he told me afterwards, he said, "There's a new Commissioner." He says, "You think if we give him more money, he wouldn't give us a report next year?" So, I think it had something to do with being a little long-winded, so thank you for having me this morning.
Thanks, Don. Okay, where am I jumping around here? Item number four, Discussion of Second Quarter Financial and Activity Report for Franklin County Health Department. Midge?
Good morning. This is pretty straightforward this quarter. We're about on target for revenue and expenses, and so we had $97,006.60 in revenue from insurance and fee for service, from private-paid patients as well. Insurance adjustments were a little lower than they've been, so that's good, because insurance companies are paying us a little better, with the Affordable Care Act has helped that, to get people covered, so that adjustment. We received $71,538 in a variety of grants. A big portion of that was actually the Healthy Communities Initiative Grant, which we transferred those funds from the community foundation over to the Health Department so we could access and utilize and monitor those funds a little more easily. So that's, those are targeted funds to the Healthy Communities Initiative. And then some miscellaneous payments, rent from the Health Partnership Clinic and others for some additional funds there. I don't know if you have any questions about that report. We had write-offs, total write-offs of $6,826.17, which includes the insurance write-offs primarily, so any questions about any of that?
I don't know, it's pretty straightforward.
Since when I was talking about grants, I might just say, in July, and the last time I was here, we did write a couple of grants, and have some progress on those. We did receive the Food Policy Council Grant, which we're gonna move forward with some assessment with that. And then we had a site visit from a Blue Cross Blue Shield team on the Pathways Grant a couple of weeks ago. We took them biking around the community and showed them everything, and they visited with a lot of community members. We had, just say, we had great turnout with our coalition members. We probably had 15 people show up for that site visit, which was just really extraordinary in the summer. So we're so appreciative of all the collaborative efforts that everybody does, and that they're willing to put into this. So then an announcement will be made about that grant probably this week, as to who received that. There were 31 counties, or 31 groups that applied, and they're giving out eight grants. So we are thinking positively about that, and we, you should hear something very, very soon about that.
Midge, how much are the grants if we do get them?
The Food Policy Council Grant's a $10,000, or $9,900. I didn't quite ask for $10,000. I don't know why, but I didn't. The Pathways Grant is $100,000 that we would use for a coordinator, primarily in some special events, over a three-year period. But the great thing about the Pathways Grant is there's an additional $215,000 that community organizations can apply for if they work towards health policy, or change some of the things they're doing, or, and I think that the example I use is if a restaurant could use it for new equipment, if they were going to expand their selection to healthier options, for example, things like that. Schools are eligible for $10,000 each if they do some things along health and wellness, so that's a, I think, a good incentive for our community, so that's a lot of money.
And that coordinator position helps, works with the businesses and schools and stuff like that to access that 200 and some thousand?
Right, right. And a part of that is good communication and publication throughout the community about what we're doing as well, so making sure that there's more, more out there about health and wellness, so, yeah.
One last thing. Would you touch on the dental clinic a little bit in our discussions there? We don't know where it's gonna go, but at least let them know.
Yeah, Amy Falk, who's the CEO of the Health Partnership Clinic, and the dentist that they have, and I apologize, her name left my brain. Anyway, they came down and visited the space at the front, and, you know.
Sweet One.
The Sweet One, thank you, to see if that would work, and they were excited about the amount of space there. And we've talked a little bit about how we could coordinate some of our space and some of their space, and how we might help provide some of the, making sure that that would work for them. The one problem with Sweet One is there isn't plumbing in there right now for a dental clinic, but they certainly went away very pleased with the fact that there is an opportunity there, and there's some, they do have some grant money, so they're kind of putting their heads together to see how that will all work, but it's a great opportunity for them, and so badly needed. They have over 200 people from our county on the waiting list for dental services, so we're hoping that that works out, that they can make that connection with the, utilize that suite, and perhaps, you know, maybe, since we're looking at kind of redoing some of our space as well, we might take that into consideration, since the plumbing's already there, so it's still kind of up in the air, but there's some real possibility.
Commissioners, and that's one thing that I told Midge, is that if we do get to a point, and that's the only thing that's holding up, is some plumbing issues, is that, as she said, that is a very, very dire need within our community. And I said, "If we get to that point, we may approach you to talk and see if there's anything that we can do to, to help that along a little bit, if there's some funding available that we could help meet this need, out of either the Reserve, Health Department Reserve Fund, or just what have you, to make that need for the long-term health of the Thank you, Midge.
Sure. So there's a lot of things going on there. The activity report is pretty standard. We did, we are still seeing a considerable number of sexually transmitted diseases. That's further down in this activity report. Of the people that come in, I mean, we probably have four and a half to five percent that we test come back positive with, primarily chlamydia. It's extremely widespread. We are having some success in getting more people immunized with Gardasil, more kids. HPV, Human Papillomavirus, affects over 14 million people a year. It causes cervical cancer, throat cancer. It's a very significant threat, and there, over the past years, has been resistance to that vaccine by a lot of parents, but we are seeing more parents accept the fact that that's a very important vaccine for their children to receive. So we're seeing an uptick in people taking that. We're also offering meningitis vaccine, Men B, now, that is, occasionally you hear of the outbreaks at the colleges, so it's not as common as the other meningitis, but it causes a huge outbreak when we happen, when it happens. It's now available for the first time in the United States, so we are offering that to adolescents as well, before they go to college. We do have typhoid vaccine on, in stock now, because we've received so many calls for travel vaccines, so we just started with typhoid because it's the most commonly requested. We'll see how that goes before we do any more expansion on those kinds of travel vaccines, but trying to serve the community, because without that, we're having to send them to Johnson County, Douglas County. So we're seeing some of that as an offering for our community. We are doing a community health assessment, you know, we did one in 2012. We are in that process. We have a themes and strengths survey that's ready to put on Survey Monkey and put on paper and send out. We'll be conducting that probably in August. We're in the middle of conducting a public health system assessment with our partners throughout the community to see where our gaps and strengths are. I'm trying hard to collect all the health status data, but I'm pretty far behind on that. It takes a lot, but we're working on it. So that's coming along. We hope to publish that in 2017, and use that then to, just like we did in 2012, which showed us that we needed to improve access to care, which was the spring board to get the Health Partnership Clinic here. We, we'll use that to create a new community health improvement plan for the next five years in 2017. So that's the purpose of the assessment, is to see where we need to go next, to assist our community. This time of year, we see a lot of tick-borne diseases. Rocky Mountain Spotted Fever is by far the most common in Franklin County. We see several cases of that every year, so I can't emphasize enough that people need to wear tick repellent when they go out, and put tick repellent on their dogs, and be aware of, that can make people really sick, severe headaches and really, really sick. Our Car Seat Program is going. Jen Wilson is training Car Seat, and that, she is just doing an absolutely fabulous job, getting car seats to individuals who don't have that, don't have them for their kids, so that's doing well as well. So any questions or comments, I'd be glad to entertain those, otherwise.
If I was planning on going to the Olympics in Brazil, what would be the suggestion for those travelers?
You know, I probably would have to double-check the CDC website for any travel vaccines. Typhoid's typically recommended in just about everywhere in those kinds of places. We don't have anything for the Zika virus, but the Zika virus is actually, they say it has hit its peak in that area, is starting to decline, that's a good thing. We do have eight cases of Zika virus in Kansas that have been identified, but those are all travel-related. None of them have been contracted from local mosquitoes yet. So those are all, that's all travel. So, you know, the biggest thing is just standard prevention when they go, if they went to Brazil or anywhere else. You know, mosquitoes are out, they carry lots of diseases, you have to wear that protection, particularly dawn and dusk. Though the Zika virus, one of the mosquitoes, the eighties mosquito, is a daytime mosquito, so you have to wear that protection all the time, so, yeah. So I'd ask that you write off, that you approve the write-off of six thousand eight twenty-six seventeen.
How much again?
Eight thousand, or six thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventeen cents.
Seventeen cents?
Yes.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve write-off of six thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventeen cents and approve the, I'll move to here on this.
Make a motion to approve the write-offs?
And approve the second quarter financial report. Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Midge.
Next item will be consideration to approve to waive a building permit fee. Larry's going to explain this to us.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Recently, the Building Department did receive a request from Clifford and Christina Connolly regarding their waiver of the building permit fee. The Connollys lost their home in April of this year and are currently in the process of rebuilding at that same location, which is Twenty Forty-Nine Indiana Road. While we don't have a written policy on this, it has been the position of the county commissioners to waive that fee for people that are willing to come back and reconstruct here in the county. What we would ask for you to do this morning would be to authorize staff to waive that building permit fee and issue the building permit in accordance with our other policies.
How much is a typical building permit?
It varies on size of the unit.
Right.
So it can be anywhere from two hundred and seventy dollars on up, depending on the size, the, you know, the total size of the structure.
That's, I assume, was a fire?
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve the request.
You do have one public comment on this.
Okay. Okay. Who is that?
Gene.
Okay. Gene, remember that same comments for the public comment, five minutes, and are all still in effect. Go ahead and come up.
Gene Hurt, 107 Jefferson Street in Pomona, Kansas. The reason I'm up here to speak on this today is this house burnt down on Indiana Road. There are people, friends of them, that contacted me and asked me, since I do things like this for people or make comments, people that ask me of how stressful this has been on these two people. And, but any fire is stressful on some peo, on anybody that has their house burned to the ground. But they requested I do it, so that's why I'm here. And I think, I know all of you do this, that you waive this fee, and, and you've been doing it for a number of years on this and others, and I think it's greatly appreciated that you do this for all our residents in this county. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Gene. Okay. Mr. Renode, you were getting ready to make a motion. You want to go ahead and make a motion to waive the fee?
I make a motion, we approve the request from the Connollys to waive the fees for a building permit.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I'd like to ask one question first, Rick. Do we ever have requests for the demolition process before the new construction to waive that permit or waive those fees?
Typically not on these, because most of these have been completely destroyed by fire. So there isn't much in the way of any demolition left to have to deal with. However, we've never really had a request, because there hasn't been enough materials that would generate any real cost to dispose of the, of the, what would be left of residue from the residents.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and second to waive the fee.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Next item will be consider a motion to approve the solicitation of bids for a replacement of the 2010 JCB two fifteen S backhoe, solid waste. John?
All right, Commissioners. Little background is the solid waste departments, backhoes are cycled approximately every five years. Our 2010 model was due for replacement in 2015. However, it was moved back due to other purchases needed for the department. It's increased, has increasing repair costs now, and it's staff recommendation to cycle these machines this year. So I'm here to ask for, consider a motion to approve the solicitation of bids for replacement of the 2010 JCB two fifteen S backhoe.
Will the, this backhoe be traded or will it be placed on purple waiver? What's the plan on for it?
We will surplus it, however, whatever is the most, that we get the best cost back.
Solicitation will ask for a bid with trade-in, without, so that way we can determine which way we want to, what we want to do with it.
Okay, anyone have any questions for John on this issue?
Is it time now to do it? I know we postponed it there.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's the time, we're, yeah. It's the time to do it now.
I'll make a motion to approve soliciting bids for this backhoe.
Second it.
Motion and second, Jen?
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number seven, and the last item, to discuss and designate voting delegates for the Kansas Association of Counties Board. Just let you know, Mr. Dunn, you was real close to getting this position while you were on vacation, but we decided to.
I think he's still in the running.
We decided to table this until you got back, so you could be here to accept it.
I appreciate that, the way, I'll be fine with it.
You're currently doing it, right?
Well, we'll see after Monday, or after next Tuesday, we'll see.
Did we have to have an alternate or just a?
We have to have two alternates, that's why we postponed this, because it took one delegate and two alternates, and there's only three of you going.
You three.
You three.
I told you I was alternate two. I make a motion that, and we need a motion on that?
Yes.
We need a motion for Commissioner Dunn to be our voting delegate, Commissioner Howard to be the first alternate, and I would be the second alternate.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, takes us to staff reports.
John?
Commissioners, just a couple of things. Number one, just a reminder that August third at six o'clock is our scheduled budget hearing. For, was damaged during the storm, and there was increased a large amount of questions about whether that actually occurred during the storm and some things like that. Out of that, FEMA has gotten very, very serious about documentation on the part of government entities that are submitting claims about storm damage and stuff. And we've just dealt with that this last, in the last month, about the storms that we had back in May and submitting those things. And so documentation is going, has been, is increasing about what we're doing, and lots of pictures and things like that. And we have discussed a little bit, is that would a drone help us out with that? And then kind of weighing the cost for that, because we are, we put out, you know, half a million dollars to repair things. We want the seventy to seventy-five percent back that we can get from FEMA on those things. And so if a drone helps us with pictures and things like that, so that we have good documentation, that can be something that would be very benefi, beneficial for us. I would also say that Melissa from Prairie Paws is here. We've submitted their reports to you, if you have any questions for her, she is here to entertain any questions that you may have. The ADA evaluator, I have spoke with Wendy Lee, she made some recommendations. There are some concerns that we have on some different facilities that we have, and so we have been working at the appropriate time to schedule something like that. So towards that goal, Mr. Oglesby, we are working for that. It's also worth noting that just last meeting, that we had proclamation where we're committed back to the ADA, and that's something that we do every year, so just to speak to your concerns. The RFP for tourism, the committee met yesterday, had presentations from that, from both of the proposals, and that went well, and we're hoping to have the responses back and the scoring back from our committee members in the next couple of days, and I will be bringing that forward to you as quickly as I can. The last thing that I would say is, is that we received engineering, the engineering, proposed engineering contract from PEC and Bartlet and West regarding the industrial park. We are working through that. Both the city and the county, their department heads, as well as the counselors for both entities, have looked through that, and we've made some recommended changes or requested changes, and that has went back to, to Bartlet and West. And so we're just working through that. And again, that'll be coming to you in the very near future. So that's all I have.
Melissa, I'd just say that after your presentation on your budget, it was, it was very good, you did a nice job presenting to us, and on our follow-up meetings that we all had on the budgets, I don't remember any real questions on, on yours at all. I thought it was, do you have any?
No, I don't.
I think it was very clear, and we had no issues with it, if I remember right. So, thank you.
I might have one question, Melissa. Just came out of the fires going on in California and all the, the animals that have to be relocated. Does Franklin County have a, like, an animal collection policy or something like that for disaster?
We're working right now. We just joined the Franklin County Emergency Management Team Meetings, and we're working with Tom Winter to try to develop a plan with that. A lot of the times, we rely on the ASPCA, or the Humane Society of the United States, to come in. I just recently joined as the county lead on a emergency task force with Humane Society of the United States, to really start getting those plans together in case you were to have a fire or tornado or any natural disaster, what would happen to the animals and how that works with Red Cross. Red Cross is required now to have a housing facility for animals right next to where they house people, and so we're working on that and what that plan looks like.
Okay, I agree. Keep up the good work, and we appreciate you keeping your requests as close to flat as you could, of course.
That's what we're going to try to do going forward, so thank you.
Okay, on with staff reports, Derek. John, anything else from your department?
Just give you a heads up, we're going to be looking to replace our two thousand grade zero turnover, get some quotes for that, bring it to you.
Okay, who else do I have out there? Janet?
We have late voting in our office tomorrow, Thursday night, until seven o'clock, so any working individuals can come late and vote till seven o'clock. And we'll also have voting from nine to noon on Saturday, so plenty of time to vote your primary ballot. The voting in my office closes at noon on Monday, and of course, the polls will be open seven to seven on Tuesday, so.
Okay, takes us to Commissioner comments and board reports.
One thing I talked to Janet about and find out, for example, the voting at Browell Schoolhouse would be in, on the Tuesday before the commission's Franklin County budget hearing, to post a sign at that voting place announcing that, as well as the Peoria Township budget meeting, which is the, on Thursday. So I think that's an opportunity for all the polling places to announce the, the county's, you know, budget hearing, just to get that word out there, remind them that it's Wednesday night or whatever else. The other thing is, I attended a webinar last week, and want to, want to make sure, John, you know, the joy really worked with me to help me get that set up, and also the tech people to, so I could do that in the building. But one of the questions I had from that meeting is, do we have an established set of rules that we follow for our order of business, like, is it Robert's Rules of Orders, or is there another one, the standard one, or something like that? I don't know. It's Robert's Rules of Order that we follow, and then we're, we don't, I wouldn't say that we stick very, very, very strictly to that, but generally, we stick to that fairly well. There are some variances that just, that the commissioners have done that work well for them, and, and we still are able to manage the meeting and, and the commissioners, the chairman's able to manage the meeting and move forward quickly. But that's generally the one that we subscribe to.
Well, I know there was a couple of times, and they talked about the, for example, if somebody makes a motion, then either they want to amend the motion or withdraw, you know, the procedure for doing those types of things. And also, when somebody is out of order, making a point of order or whatever else, and those types of terms that we would use perhaps to politely or correctly bring another commissioner back to where we need to be or something like that. So I was just kind of curious about what, what ours was, so.
Well, and that's one of the projects that is on my, I wish it was shorter term, but long-term radar, is to come up with almost a series of trainings. There'll be some challenges, because the board has historically done things a certain way, and I want to operate efficiently, but I do think there are some areas where we can tighten things up, particularly in situations such as this, where we have four sitting commissioners, and what we're going to do should a vote ever be split two to two, and there are just various situations that I think we need to brush up on to make sure that we, and that's, I wish I could give you a hard timeline on when that's going to happen, but it is on our radar, so.
Yeah, this, this question's come up a few times during my time about Robert's Rules of Order, and we've been kind of informal about it, and it's worked well for the commission that we're not doing it strictly according to Robert's Rules of Order, but we're doing it kind of on our behalf and kind of informally.
Well, I know that they use the, this goldsmith at NACO, and it's the right way to run a meeting. And one of my reasons for that interest big time is because of going to Lane and Rantoul and Wellsville City Council, helping them. In fact, I think I recently saw where there's going to be another coma meeting where, that they attend that, and I, I think sharing that with those people in those communities will just help them conduct their business as well and give them a, a good frame to, to work with. And just, I wrote down myself a little cheat sheet that I'd come up with on, just on each item of business, how the procedure to go through to, to repeat the motion and so forth, so. I just think there's some of those things that I'm, just didn't know about and wanted to find out.
Well, and anytime you want, I have resources that I'm sure I could get to you to supplement that. And I want to say that this board does a good job. I mean, largely, Robert's Rules of Order are followed pretty well, but there are variances here and there. But you're absolutely right, it's the, some of the townships, some of the smaller towns, I, I think they are greatly in need of a little bit of, of training on that, so. I think they are greatly in need of a little bit of training on that, so...
Well, I think it's, if we have the opportunity to help them in any way we can to provide, and it's, when I go to Lane, I go to Rantoul, we usually have a representative there from the Sheriff's Department, and I know Janet has gone down, the Clerk's Office has gone down and helped those people. And I, whether it's tech, IT, or whoever it is, if we can help them conduct their business, they're part of the county, and their, their business is important too, and they just don't have the resources or the, I don't use the word maybe expertise, but at least to fall back on and get some ideas with that. I think that helps. And that's, I think that's all I've got. I've got a city council meeting tonight, so...
Yeah, last night, I went to the band concert, the Army Band Concert, the Disciplin Auditorium in Ottawa, and it was well-attended, and a lot of people there, and then the 312th Army Band, a reserve unit from Lawrence, put on the program. They did an excellent, excellent job. Real good, good program. That's all I've been to.
Yeah, I've not been to any meetings since our, our last meeting. Information announcements, we got commission meeting on next Wednesday, budget hearing that night.